Okay, our meeting will come to order, please. Could someone get the door, please? Thank you. Thanks, Rick. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham. Commissioner Galt.
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Kayler.
Present.
Tonight, I would, I have asked one of our own ambassadors to do our invocation, Randall Dawson, if you'll come up, please.
Let us pray. Almighty and gracious God, we come before you this evening, asking your blessings upon this meeting and to all that are attended here. There are so many things, Lord, that we are so thankful for you, and we're thankful that we live in the city of Paducah, and we just ask you to bless our city and bless the business that's going to be taken care of tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Would one of the speech team members come up and do our invocation, our pledge of allegiance for us, please? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Manager, any additions or deletions?
We did have item...
B.
...B deleted from the agenda.
Under municipal orders.
Yes.
Tonight, I've asked the Paducah Tillman Speech and Forensic Team champs to come down. I'd like to recognize them, we're really proud of them. So if you all will all come up here, please. You can just line up in the front here and face the audience, everyone can see your handsome young faces. The Paducah Tillman Speech and Forensic Team, let me come over here. The Paducah Tillman Speech and Forensic Team is here tonight. They won their regional championship, and they had five individual championships within that, with 34 of 36 possible births, and they will go to the state in mid-March. So Martha, this is your team, right? Would you all like to come up and say a little bit about the team? Because we're really proud of you guys.
I would hate to miss a chance to brag on these kids who we are so proud of. They come from kids who really, speech is the main thing they do, to kids who have to juggle music and speech, kids who are athletes and come after practice. They squeeze in academic team, and some of these kids will be rushing to get from Lexington over to Louisville because they are champions in the academic team and in the speech team. So in March, we'll have a real close race there for them to fit in everything in one day. And Paducah Tillman had one of the first National Forensic League teams in the country back, the National Honor League was formed in 1928, and Tillman formed their team in 1932. And so it's one of the oldest teams in the country, and we're so tickled that they're still going strong, and we're just very, very proud of these young people. And we know this will translate well as they go into college and into life.
And this is also another great thing about tonight. We have our award-winning speech and forensic team here, and we have our own award-winning ambassadors, I consider them award-winners because they do so much for our community. They put on that happy face for our community when we have visitors that come here, and they really make people that come to visit us feel extra special. And this is all due to Mayor Jerry Montgomery. She's the one that started the ambassadors in 1988. What a wonderful idea that was. So I'm going to do a proclamation for the ambassadors tonight from the Office of the Mayor and the Judge Executive, a joint proclamation. Whereas the Paducah Ambassadors, Inc., a hospitality organization commonly known as the Red Coats, was organized and had the first training session on February 20, 1988. And whereas the Paducah Ambassadors program evolved from then-Mayor Jerry Montgomery's discussion with local, community, and hospitality leaders, the purpose of this group of trained volunteers is to assist the city and the county government and local organizations by welcoming and informing visitors about Paducah area events and history. The men and women of the Paducah ambassadors have represented Paducah and McCracken County at official events, celebrations, conventions, groundbreaking, and by providing city and flood wall mural tours, assisting with the Salvation Army bell ringing, Christmas in the park, and other community events. The Paducah ambassadors are known by visitors internationally for hospitality during the American Quilters Society quilt show. Also, passengers from the River Cruise boats, which dock regularly at the Port of Paducah, speak fondly of the treatment they receive while they are in Paducah. And whereas, the Paducah ambassadors volunteer thousands of hours each year to our community. Now therefore, I, Gail Kayler, Mayor of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, and I, Van Newberry, County Judge Executive of the County of McCracken in Kentucky, on behalf of the Paducah ambassadors do hereby proclaim February 20, 2013, as Paducah Ambassador Day. Thank you. Jerry, would you like to say something tonight? Please do.
This is an exciting time to think that a group of total volunteers, they buy their own clothes, they do the work, has stayed together for 25 years. And I'm so thankful because I know the many, many good things they've done for the city and for the visitors that come to our city. And we have so many wonderful people that have worked with this, given hours of their time, that are not with us anymore, but many that are. And so I'm grateful for this proclamation. And Charles is now our president, and Charles, do you have anything you'd like to say?
To the Mayor, Mayor Kayler, to the City Commissioners, to the County Judge Exec, Van Newberry, on behalf of this fine group of ambassadors, we would like to say thank you for this proclamation making Wednesday, February 20, Paducah Ambassador Day. It's a great honor for us, and that is the date of our 25th anniversary. So again, we are more than appreciative for you doing this, and we thank you from, and it's sincere from our heart. So thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Galt.
I move that the reading of the minutes for January 29 and February 5, 2013, City Commissioned Meetings be waived and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved as written.
Second. City Clerk.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye.
We'll go into motions. Commissioner Rhodes.
All right. I move that the following documents be received and filed. amended surety bond to include Commissioner Rhodes and Wilson pursuant to Kentucky Revade statutes, number two, documents for the following projects. Collection Service Contract with Addendum and Contingency Fee Schedule with Credit Bureau Systems Incorporated to Process and Treat Delinquent Accounts for the City for 2013. Noble Park Pool Rehabilitation Projects with Aquatic Renovation Systems Incorporated. Renovation and Preservation of the Market House and River Discovery Center with Ray Blackinson Incorporated. Front Loading Refuge Collection Truck with McBride Max Sales, Inc., for Engineering Public Works Department. Construction of 621 Harrison Street Fountain Avenue Project Revitalization Project Contractor, Jim Steel Construction Incorporated. Construction for 302 Harahan Boulevard Fountain Avenue Housing Revitalization Project Contractor, Crawford Contracting. Construction of 1527 Rose Street Fountain Avenue Housing Revitalization Project Contractor, Brandon Owens Construction. Department of Finance, financial report for period ending September 30, 2012, October 31, 2012, and November 30, 2012. Inter-local Cooperation Agreement between City and McCracken County for Animal Control Services, Notice of Cancellation for City Commission Meeting on February 12, 2013.
Need a second?
Second. Any discussion? City Clerk.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye.
Municipal Orders, Commissioner Wilson.
Upon the recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah ordered that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Hi, Cindy.
Hi. Mayor Commission, we have before you several personnel actions of note. We've got four new firefighters, three external candidates, and one internal transferee, and we filled our compost equipment operator position, and by doing so, we'll be opening a fleet mechanic position.
Is it kosher for me to say something about one of the candidates, or not?
Sure, it's public record who they are.
Well, I would just like to say, I'm really glad to see that Justin Gray is on our list as firefighter. I know him well, and I didn't know he was really, I'd looked at the personnel, but it didn't ring a bell with me until I saw someone today that knows him well. And he is a veteran, so you know, it's good to hire the veterans when they come out of service. So glad to have him here, and I know he's had some EMS training, so he should be a great addition, Steve, so.
I'm glad to hear that. I did not know you had a connection. Thank you.
Didn't have a connection with hiring.
Oh.
Absolutely.
First ever.
Wanted to clear that up. All right. Any discussion? City Clerk.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye.
We'll go on to ordinances adoption. Commissioner Galt.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance declaring municipally-owned real property held for the use and benefit of the Commissioners of Waterworks of the City of Paducah, DBA Paducah Water, as surplus and approving the transfer to the Hindren Fire Department pursuant to Section 2-668 of the Paducah Codes of Ordinances. This ordinance is summarized as follows. "In the ordinance of the City of Paducah declares the real property located at the intersection of Royals Avenue and AT Massa Drive formerly known as Old Mayfield Road in Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky, and acquired by the City for the use and benefit of Commissioners of Waterworks of the City of Paducah, DBA Paducah Water, and Paducah Water's acquisition of the assets of the Hindren Water District Surplus Property and approves its transfer without consideration and authorizes the Mayor of the City of Paducah, Kentucky for the use and benefit of Paducah Water to execute and deliver a quickclaim deed of conveyance of the surplus property to the Hindren Fire Department, a McCracken County Fire Protection District created pursuant to KRS 75.010, a political subdivision and governmental agency of McCracken County, Kentucky."
Second.
Any discussion? We've, this is something that we've already discussed, so we can move on. City Clerk.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Brim Striping Company Incorporated for the City of Paducah's pavement marking program for the remaining portion of the 2013 calendar year and for the 2014 calendar year ending December 31, 2014. This ordinance is summarized as follows. "The City of Paducah accepts a bid of Brim Striping Company for the City of Paducah's pavement marking program for the remaining portion of the 2013 calendar year and for the 2014 calendar year ending December 31, 2014. At the unit prices below, authorize the Mayor to execute a contract for same." And I won't read all 29 or 24 little items.
You have to read them.
You're supposed to read those.
Okay, item number one. Paint four-inch line, left front, $0.20. Paint 12-inch stop lines, left front, or I guess that's, linear feet, $1.50. Paint 24-inch stop signs, lineal foot, $3. Paint straight arrow, each, $40. Paint turn arrow, each, $40. Paint combination arrow, each, $80. Paint eight-inch crosswalks, lineal foot, $1. Paint school, quote-unquote, each, $100. Paint railroad crossings, quote-unquote, each, $300. Paint stop, each, $150. Paint only, each, $150. Paint handicap symbol, each, $25. Paint four-inch parking lot lines, lineal foot, $0.35. Thermal four-inch line, lineal foot, $1. Thermal 12-inch stop lines, lineal foot, $4. Thermal 24-inch stop lines, lineal foot, $8. Thermal straight arrow, each, $80. Thermal turn arrow, each, $80. Thermal combination arrow, each, $160. Thermal eight-inch crosswalks, lineal foot, $2. Thermal school, each, $250. Thermal railroad crossings, each, $325. Thermal stop, each, $225. Thermal only, each, $225.
Thank you. And we've all been there, Alan, so.
Second.
Do you like item number 16?
Number 16.
Seconded.
Sandra did. Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye.
Ordinances introduction, so we do not vote on these. Commissioner Wilson.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, approving a design agreement with the Department of the Army, represented by the District Engineer, U.S. Army Engineer, Louisville District, and the City of Paducah, Kentucky, for the Ohio River Shoreline Paducah, Kentucky LFPP Reconstruction Project, and authorizing the execution of same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby approves the design agreement between the Department of the Army and the City of Paducah, Kentucky, for the Ohio River Shoreline Reconstruction Project, and authorizes the Mayor to execute said agreement.
Seconded.
Rick.
Mayor Commission, this is a continuation of a project we've been working on since 1998 for the reconstruction of our flood wall system. This particular project is for PED, which stands for Preliminary Engineering and Design. Currently, the staff and the district office have $600,000 of available federal funding to move forward with portions of the design of this project, of which we have a 25% match, a local match, so that'd be a local match of $150,000 total. It's a $20 million endeavor, but it's not going to be done all at once, and we constantly work with our federal representatives in DC that we look for word bills, which are Water Resource Development Acts that need to be passed, and then also appropriations for any monies that we would receive, and as we receive monies, we actually move forward the project. So it's being piecemealed as, on a, as we go basis. So this particular project will start the design of the pump stations that we have, which is our primary area of concern.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Commissioner Galt.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, amending Chapter 2, Administration, Division 15, Paducah Renaissance Advisory Board of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Code of Ordinances. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that Chapter 2, Administration, Division 15, Paducah Renaissance Alliance Advisory Board is amended to increase the number of members from nine to 15.
Second. Lisa.
You were faster than I thought. Mayor Commissioners, we just, last time we all met, our Chairman of the Board, Darlene Mazone, was here to give a presentation about why our current board feels the need to increase our board membership from nine to 15. And as an accredited Main Street program, who is trying to accomplish, you know, the four principles or eight guiding principles of the program across all four points, the program is really volunteer-based, and the more hands we have, the more work that we think we can accomplish. So we appreciate you all considering this request.
I have one question. Will these 15 be the same as the Friends of Main Street, or will there essentially be 30 volunteers?
The Friends of Main Street actually changed their name. They're now the Columbia Club.
Okay.
It is a separate 501(c)(3), but the bylaws of that nonprofit say that their board mirrors the board that's appointed by the mayor. So it's the same board.
So all, it'll be the same board?
Correct.
Okay.
And I noticed that all of them, the term, except for initial appointments, shall be for four years. Will any of their appointments be staggered?
Yes, when we go to actually appoint the additional members, my understanding is we're going to reappoint all 15 of them, and we'll stagger them so that we won't have to have...
So they don't all roll off?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I know at the last meeting, Commissioner Abraham had asked about seeing that list, so I think he wanted to have some input on it.
He did, actually. He's recommended a young woman who accepted the position of being on the board, so, you know, I think that, I think we're all filled at this point to the 15.
And we'll see that list next week, right?
Did you give that to Commissioner Abraham? He has seen it.
This is first reading, so it has to be read again before you appoint.
Yeah. But he made a recommendation of someone that he wanted to be included on the board, so we took his recommendation, reached out to her, and she gladly accepted the position.
Could we go ahead and get that list next week, maybe? Next meeting?
Yeah.
So we can look over it?
Happy to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we go on now to City Managers' Report.
I'm going to, before I get to item one, just mention a couple things. This week, postcards are going out to the households that will be randomly surveyed for our citizen satisfaction survey. There's been a little press on that in the last day or two, a little commentary on that in the last day or two. We encourage those who receive the surveys to complete them. It's a very important thing. It's said that if you don't try to measure something, you don't know how well you're doing, and this is an attempt by the city to measure citizen satisfaction with our services and programs, and citizen satisfaction is, in fact, the most important measure. I think it's significant that the city as an organization is reaching out to our public to ask them that question. If we're not doing that, then we're reliant on our own assessments of how well we're doing, and that may or may not always be accurate. So we're all excited about this survey. We encourage our public that receives it to take advantage of the opportunity to participate and get the response rate as high as we can. Mentioned to the press yesterday that a 30-plus percent response is statistically valid. There's science behind all that. That might seem low to some folks, but be assured that that response rate does generate a valid survey of public opinion. So, City Day at the legislature's tomorrow, Mayor and I are headed to that, and a few directors, and then I'll be in Frankfurt the rest of the week for the Kentucky City Managers' meeting. While in Frankfurt, I may stop into the league office and ask about the necessity of reading a 27-item bid tab. I'd like to hear that firsthand myself as well. I haven't seen that before either, so I share your wonderment about that, Commissioner Rhodes. There was commentary in the paper today about the upcoming cleanup at the showroom. That's an attachment to the convention center. Couple points of clarification there. That particular facility is not part of the convention center, it was part of the executive in acquisition that the city made, and it's space that the city did not have a plan for at that time. We still do not have a definite plan for it, and without activity in that kind of space, it is susceptible to vandalism, and I really think that's the root cause of that, is that it appeared to not have activity. It appeared to be, as far as vandalism, something that someone would not likely to be seen or caught because of the lack of activity there. Short of boarding up all the glass and putting guards around that 24 hours a day, I don't know how that, some of that couldn't have been prevented, but I think it is significant that we are addressing that, and what I believe is that going in there and cleaning that out, and we will be using city resources for that. At one time, we took a bid for that, that was close to $100,000 that we passed on that opportunity, if you will. So I think that by getting it cleaned up, that'll send a signal that it has not been abandoned, it still will not be active in the sense of people moving through it, and I suppose still susceptible to some vandalism, but I think we're doing the appropriate thing with that at this point in time. With that said, we, I alerted the commission several weeks ago that there was an impending decision necessary on the next component of the hike bike trail construction associated with the crossing at U.S. Highway 45, and that we had not, at the time that the grant application was originally submitted, had good information to base a cost projection on. So there would be a presentation forthcoming on that so that the commission could take a look at design alternatives and deal with the issue of how we're going to pay for that. The hike bike trail program is based on an 80/20 match, and we carry funds from project to project if there is carryover. So there has been city resources put in that program over the years. It's important that this, that we get a determination on this because we are in the design phase, and we're working with the time clock, and the granting authorities need to see evidence of progress in order to stay with us and not pull back our funding, in which case we could lose the opportunity to make the next extension of the bike path or the hike bike trail. I've heard them called so many things, but I think we all understand what we're talking about. So tonight, Rick Murphy, along with an assist from Mark Thompson, is going to present to you his work on that issue, starting out by talking to you about the standards that he has to work with in order to meet the safety requirements of the granting authority to proceed with some sort of a design to accomplish a safe crossing at that intersection.
You want the lights off for that up there?
Yeah, once you hit that button.
That help back there? Again, as the City Manager has introduced this project, it's something that we've been working on for several years. So today, we put together a, I guess, this presentation that hopefully will address community concerns, what the, what the project really entails. So with that being said, of course, the Greenway Trail Phase 2, I would share with you that the project of February 2008, through a municipal order 1365, authorized the grant application. Looking at the little, little bit of history, in October 2008, the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet awarded an FHWA $500,000 transportation enhancement grant to the City Cabinet awarded an FHWA $500,000 transportation enhancement grant to the city of Paducah. And in January of two thousand and ten, we passed an ordinance, there's the ordinance number, that authorized the execution of the $500,000 grant with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet with an approved $200,000 local match. I hope this graphic helps you a little bit. I'm gonna find the cursor here if it comes up here. There it is. This actually identifies the origin of the project, starting behind the smoke shop over on North Eighth Street and extends around on top of the city's flood wall or the levee, so to speak. It comes over and crosses K-Roe Road or State Route three oh five, and then it proceeds down the levee through the park. Come on, the cursor. Where'd you go? There you go, if you don't keep it active. And then it will terminate at what we refer to as the up and over. That is that concrete ramp that goes up and over the levee there at the skate park. That's the origin of the trails that go out to County Park Road, out there in that area. This is taken from the dash, or I guess, my truck today. This is northbound on what is referred to by the highway department as forty-five X, and also referred to as North Eighth Street, whereas you have the PTL, truck trailers here, you have some trees here, and I'm not too concerned about trees in this conversation. They can be removed. But the vitality of this property, this commercial property, is of a concern as we approach there. This is southbound forty-five X or southbound North Eighth Street with the Brookport Bridge to the rear as you approach. This is, this is actually the levee itself, where it crosses the road. And I will remind you that this is a state highway. US forty-five X is a state authorized highway. Now, I don't encourage this, but as I work for the city of Paducah, that is my vehicle. It is on the levee, and I am an authorized vehicle on a piece of property we do maintain, but I would not like to see other private vehicles on the levee. But this is westbound at the termini of the existing Trail Phase One. The concrete is at my back, and then as you move forward, there is forty-five right there on North Eighth Street. And then yet another, just closer to that point where there's some cable that's there that, it's more of a deterrent, but it's ineffective in a lot of respects in this area. Well, I draw particular attention to the slope of this road. You can't really see it in this picture, but this road has a lot of slope to it. It has a ten percent cross slope. What does that mean? That means that it drops one foot in every ten foot, okay? Or ten foot in every hundred foot, however you might want to look at it. Another thing I would show you is this agricultural entrance that's over here. There's several hundred acres that's farmed by a local farmer here, Mike Boltwright, who actually has his business and residence right here in this lower left-hand area. Again, this is on top of the levee, and I'm looking eastbound or back, or, excuse me, back toward Paducah, whereas this would be the smoke shop. Over in this area, you can see where the existing trail ends by the improvements there where the Excelsior matting has been placed. So, that's the existing termini of Phase One. As we move forward, we need to look at certain considerations when we make applications on these grants, because when you get a project, you've got to determine your design standards, okay? A lot of times, your design standards are based on the origin of the funding. More often than not, the source of the funding will determine the extent of the applicable regulations. Let me expand on that a little bit. For example, we might want to build a sidewalk in the city of Paducah. We know we have to follow ADA standards because that is a federal law. There are some other things that we need to follow when you deal with federal monies, because then it's going to be treated as a federal project, which means all federal standards have to be met on that. So, just to list a few, as this is an FHWA, Federal Highway Administration, grant through the Federal Highway Administration, all the regulations apply, okay? The ADA, the Americans with Disabilities Act of nineteen ninety applies. The US Army Corps of Engineers applies here because we are actively engaging property that is known as the levee, but we also have the US Army Corps of Engineers standards that we need to make sure we pursue the integrity of that levee. So, if we are making construction changes in or around or near it, that levee's function is taken into consideration. ASHTO, you've heard that term before. That's American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. And the policy in which we use, and we refer to it as, I guess, the Civil Engineers' Transportation Bible, is a policy on geometric design and highways and streets, the current edition. This gets updated yearly. I think they need to sell more manuals, but, you know, a lot of times, the tables in there doesn't change, just the cover, okay? MUTCD, a lot of folks in the community have heard these terms before. MUTCD stands for the Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices, okay? You would be working with the current edition on that. What is that? You've seen a stop sign. You've seen a speed limit sign. You've seen a warning sign. You've seen a construction sign. All forms of signage is basically governed by the MUTC guidelines. That is also a federal publication. Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet Design Manual. Why mention that? Again, I talked about State Route, excuse me, US forty-five X is authorized or under the authority of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, and therefore, we've got to look at their design standards as well. Okay. We've basically identified through the photos, we have a trail, and we want to get from one side of the road to the other side of the road. We want to get from point A to point B. And there are several considerations that we could consider. Alternate A, a pedestrian overpass. We'll follow up on these. Alternate B, an at-grade crossing. I think that's what we're here mainly to discuss this evening. Alternate C, a pedestrian underpass. I don't like to refer to it as a tunnel because it's not, it is per se a tunnel, but it's more for a pedestrian underpass than that. Alternate D is always an option, and that's a no-build option. But let's just face it, why would we apply for a grant and decide not to build something when we have something that we've decided we wanted to pursue? So, without going any further, I would take alternate D off the list. Okay. Remember when I said alternate A was a pedestrian overpass? Now, I realize that that's a four-lane highway or six-lane highway with a barrier. I also realize the vintage of that picture because look at the age of the cars. I actually took this picture out of an ASHTO manual because, again, I will tell you, they don't update the pictures. They just update the cover. Okay? I will also expand on this, that you see these ramps? These ramps don't meet. You know, you can look at the age of this car and know that that predates nineteen ninety, okay? I would say, well, let me go back to that. I would say that vehicle right there might be some sixties version, and that ramp there is pre-ADA, which doesn't meet the current design standards. But I would share with you that if you did have an overpass, you have to maintain a certain level of clearance. I've done a real quick calculation on this, and for seven hundred foot of ten-foot wide bridge and ramp, you would be looking at an estimated a hundred dollars per square foot. If you want to look at it, bridges, just your standard run-of-the-mill, unattractive bridge is anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five dollars per square foot of bridge deck. Applying that cost to seven hundred foot of that, we have to get the height to clear the road and then the ramp to get off the road to get back down to elevation. You're looking at a $700,000 estimate, and we haven't even started building a trail yet. Okay? There's one other thing associated with that alternate, and that is these fences. Those are referred to as suicide fences, okay? I don't think you'll die from the fall, but you might die from the traffic. You'll notice that those fences are built as well on the John Purryer Bridge that goes out Husband's Road out the south side. They're still a design standard to prevent people from doing foolish things. But given that cost and given that unattractive and realizing that we don't have six lanes of traffic, it's still, by cost only, not a viable option. Alternate B, I want to talk about the at-grade crossing. You reduce existing cross slope. Remember, I talked about the banking on that road. Here's where ADA is going to come into play. The linear path of a, I guess, a person who suffers from a physical restriction in a wheelchair is, would be violating the ADA standard for a ten percent cross slope. Therefore, the cross slope in that road would have to be changed, and I'll show you that a little bit when we follow up in a graphic. When you change the cross slope of the road, you're going to affect about eight hundred feet of the existing road. That will be the geometry of the, just the shape of that surface geometry would need to be changed. Okay? Then, then you have to do modifications in nature of US forty-five to be upgraded to current highway standards. You know, a lot of folks that deal with, I guess, existing building codes or whatever, when you reengage or start working on a building, then you have things, you have modern codes that have to be applied to those improvements. Much is the same case when you start touching an old highway. The codes have been changed. They've been modified. They've been revised. So, when you start touching it, you start having to bring it into modern standards. Okay? Given the restricted sight distance, I will recall moving northbound on North Eighth Street, remember the PTL truck or the Pascal truck, the trailers. Again, I'm not concerned about trees, though those can be removed. But given the restricted sight distance based on the current geometry, that's the curvature of the road, a signal would be required for this location, okay? A pedestrian button. Now, you might ask, okay, well, are people going to go up there and hit the button? And let's just be realistic, and wait for that to change before they cross? Some will, most won't. Okay? We see it every day. Do people behave that way every day downtown? Do they wait for that button to change, or they say, "There's no traffic. I'm going"? I mean, that's just common sense. But we do live in a world where we might have to face a claim one day on something that, an unforeseen event or an undesirable event occur, but we have to make sure that we are compliant with these things. I've also looked at the average daily traffic at the flood wall intersection with forty-five X is four thousand three hundred and fifty-nine cars per day, and that count was taken in two thousand and eleven. Okay? Now, I'm going to talk about some of this geometry and some of those statements I made earlier. And I apologize that this is not bigger and it might appear to be different for the at-home viewing audience, but this is a detail of all the signage that would be required in this area should a at-grade crossing be permitted. This detail up here shows how the cross slope in that road would need to be changed to meet the ADA standard of reducing the cross slope in the road. And the limits of the project would start about where my truck was in the curve and come around to about the point where the PTL truck was sitting right here. Okay? There's your eight hundred foot. Now, the one thing you may not be able to see very clearly from the viewing audience here is, let me get this cursor to work. Come on. Is this fill slope, okay? The fill slope is caused because you're raising this pavement up, and then the pavement doesn't have anything to rest against. Now, we've all driven into county, and we've all seen, I guess, county roads or rural routes, I would say, that you have vertical pavement, and if you drop off that pavement, you know, you're going to be, you know, catching the undercarriage on your car. On a US route, you're not allowed to do that. On a US route, you have to maintain a shoulder. You have to maintain a safe slope. A three-to-one slope is shown here. So, as that gets raised, as that gets raised there, you have to put some fill on the inside of this curve. That's the biggest cost of that. And then you have some right-of-way acquisition, and here is a cost estimate down here of which indicates those costs, and you have about an $80,000 signal installation there. It's the largest part of that cost, of which does not include the life cycle cost of that should that get taken out. We've also included that the K-Roe Road or State Route three oh five crossing does have a at-grade crossing, non-signalized. I would like to show you the difference in those because of the geometry and the speeds associated with that. This geometry here, and if you've driven it, it has a banking, again, that ten percent cross slope for coming around that curve at that location. It has limited sight distance, again, as you go north. I'm going to be honest with you, coming southbound, you have good sight distance, but you have the cross slope of that road. Here, your road or State Route three oh five is more predominantly straight, okay? So, you have good sight distance both ways, and you also can sign it appropriately to MUTCD standards. And we also can paint and put the appropriate markings on the road to slow traffic and make them aware of that. We've also made comparisons of K-Roe Road, the at-grade crossing, similar to the ones at US forty-five X crossing. An underpass is not a viable option due to the current topography. Topography being the lay of the land, including the existing utilities and the inability to drain the structure. There are certain things at the forty-five crossing that we were able to do because topography allows us to do it. If you've been over at the three oh five location, if you were to go parkside with an overpass, or, excuse me, with an underpass, you would have a hole, and we complain about Jackson Street a lot. Everybody knows about Jackson Street, how it fills up full of water, okay? And we can't pass. This would fill up full of water. We couldn't, we couldn't drain it. It wouldn't drain naturally. I think the overpass, we've already talked about that, overpass wouldn't be sensible at that location either for that. So, no existing cross slope issues exist there because it's straight. The road is not in a curve, so there's no ADA concerns to be concerned about. There's not a right-of-way acquisition necessary there because we've already bought the right-of-way in the past for that, and there's no real design considerations that would require it. ASHTO minimum sight densities are satisfied, which means the pedestrian signal is not required. Given the current geometry at the K-Roe Road, applicable regulatory warning signs are more conducive to an at-grade crossing. The average daily traffic at this location is four thousand and eighty-six cars per the two thousand and ten Kentucky Transportation Cabinet counts. Okay? Now, I'm going to get into some engineering drawings here, and I'm sorry, but I had to do this with the limited time I had to put this together. This basically shows what we refer to as a plan and a profile sheet. This is, if you were in an airplane and you were over this, maybe three or four hundred feet looking down, or maybe a thousand feet looking down. This is how the project might look. This is the flood wall alignment. This is the alignment of the proposed underpass. This is what we refer to as a profile view, and it's in an exaggerated scale, which means this slope really looks steep, but it's, for engineering purposes, it defines things that we can see readily. But five percent is five feet and a hundred feet, okay? So, you can kind of think about it in those terms. This actually represents the fill and Highway forty-five, and that slope right there is actually the pitch in the road. And this is actually the underpass itself, which is fifty-two feet long. But it shows you that there's a five percent slope. Now, why do I keep hitting on the five percent slope? The five percent slope is an ADA maximum slope for a continuous slope without a landing. Sometimes you can go to eight percent slope. You'll go thirty feet, there's a flat landing. You'll go thirty feet, and there's a flat landing. But if you go to five percent, you can go on a straight, on a straight slope. So, that's what we elected to do here. So that's what we elected to do here. Shows some details, again, there's that 10% cross slope coming across 305. This actually shows you the limited clearance, we're trying to make a maximum clearance for cyclists and those who wish to walk on this project as well through here to maximize that. And then, we're showing the limited cover of the road over that. This shows actually the pedestrian underpass itself, and this is Highway 45 coming over. This is just a, I guess, a less busy view where actually we're showing some other amenities associated with this project, whereas this is actually the underpass itself, where you do have to build some short walls to receive some fill slopes in here. These walls are not that long, and they're not that tall, and I'm going to show you some of that. And then this, the wall that's nearer to the levee is longer, it's about 180 feet long there, and it will vary in height, anywhere from zero to six to nine feet. I'll show you those in a second. It'll be nine feet tall here, down to about six feet tall there, to zero here. This is what I was trying to illustrate to you, if you were walking down the path here, the wall height is zero. If you were about at this location here, you'd be anywhere from four to five feet tall, which your head would still be above the ground, of which you could be readily seen. The last few feet would go from about six feet to about nine feet tall, where you're actually entering the underpass there, and, but this, all, all this area here would be open to the atmosphere. Similarly, on the exiting end, you would have, coming out of the tunnel, you would have a 10-foot or a nine-foot wall, down to about a five-to-six-foot wall, gradually diminishing to no wall. These are, those were the walls directly against the levee. These are the walls that would be opposite those walls that are considerably shorter and considerably, considerably shorter in length, and then more abrupt as far as quickly getting to the height to go into the underpass. This just shows you the left and the right wall. This is a view that if you were, had the new trail at your back and you were starting to walk, if you were starting to walk on top of the levee and progressed, this is where, and, and go up the page, I would invite, don't go down the page, start from the bottom of the page and go up, right's right, left's left. And as you would progress, we start bringing this, this down off the levee, and this is that slope, this is that 5% slope I showed you in the profile. So as you move forward, you're getting lower on the levee, and this is the fill you would build just to support that, that structure or that walkway. Each one, the distance, one thing I would tell you, the distance from one cross section to the next cross section is 50 feet. I bring that to your attention because to this point right here, there's no wall, or if there is a wall, it's of negligible height that's not shown on here, and then it, within the next 50 feet, it gets up to about four feet tall. Okay? And there's no wall to the left. You're still all open to the atmosphere. You might say, well, you know, why, why wall? Well, we do have to maintain the levee. And when you're on a tractor and you got a 15-foot batwing mower and you're trying to mow on that slope, you don't necessarily want to put your, your staff at risk and have them continue on this slope pulling that batwing mower at the top of that wall. So for safety concern, we put this 10-foot berm on here that, I guess, reduces that slope to make it safer to maintain the levee as we mow it. Okay? Now you'll notice that the cross section before this had a wall on the right, and this actually has a wall on the right and the left, and that's, that shorter wall is in length right here. And you'll notice that it's almost instantaneous, and I invite you all to look at this room. Okay? A lot of people, I've heard, there's a concern about safety, people's safety, and that, that creates, I guess, an arena for, I guess, bad behavior on that. That's 52 feet long. The, the actual structure that's enclosed is 52 feet long. It's also lit. It has built-in lighting that will be 24/7, or basically on a timer when the sun goes down, the photo, photo controller on that will cause the lights to come on. Then as you, that's, that's entering, that's in it, that's out of it. Small wall on the left, then you're back to the trail, and you're just working your way back up to the top of the levee. One thing I would bring into consideration here, you remember the agricultural farm field entrance that I brought to your attention in the photos? This is actually the location for that farm field entrance because he has an access agreement, I guess, through the purchase of the right-of-way and purchase of that real estate for this, and as part of the negotiations, they maintained that they at all times have access to those several hundred acres of agricultural land for, for their enjoyment. And then you're back on top of the levee. Now, I think the biggest, I think the biggest driving factor in this entire discussion has been cost. We do consider cost, but we also consider safety, and we consider lifelong safety, not just, I would say, temporary. One thing I'd like to back up to on this particular slide, and this is something that I, I want to, I want to say from this podium, that several years ago, and this is just part of, I guess, our society, several years ago, when during Albert Jones's administration, there was bad behavior of folks that took a body and disposed of it over on the riverside of the levee. The then sitting mayor, Albert Jones, approached me and said, "I want the levee shut down. I want it secured. We're not going to have that kind of behavior in Paducah." So, I was given that task, and I'm like going, well, it's hard to secure nine and a quarter miles of levee out there without any funds to do so. At the very same time, we're approaching transportation officials about making trails. That's when these considerations for trails are coming up, and I'm like going, we have no trespassing signs on the levee for a reason. It's to protect the levee and to protect people from the hazards that are on the levee. At the same time, we're pursuing grant funds to put trails on the levee. I took a very, I guess, stern stance about trails on the levee, and then I realized that we're going to do this, so I had to do it in an about face. And then I said, "Okay, if we're going to do this, we're going to do it right, and we're going to do it safe." So, we get here to this part here of money. The concern being money. Here is our $500,000 FHWA grant. Here is our local match. Now there's a, an endowment fund that was left to the city of Paducah for the purposes of trails, in which we could enjoy the interest earnings off of that endowment for the purposes of trail improvement. We have forecasted or estimated that that endowment fund could be anywhere from $100,000 to $125,000 worth of earnings. So that, that represents that $100,000. We've hedged on the lower side. We've also shown, we're showing the carryover from the Phase 1 project. We actually have $147,000 that's carryover from the Phase 1 project. And then we also have local bond funds of $200,000 that were in a previous bond issue. So, if you were to look at available sources as we move forward, we have available to us for use $947,000. That's with whatever we've moved with. Okay? Now let's move, move down here to expenses. Expenses to date with the current design, of which you've seen a portion of that design here, is $183,000. That's design and property acquisition, all legal fees, all the work that we've done to date on this particular portion of the project, we've spent $183,761. Now, I'll bring your attention back up to this $200,000. This money has been paid out of that money. Okay? To this point. And that's applicable to both projects or any alternate to date. However, if we were to pursue other alternates, we would have an additional design fee, therefore you see a difference in these two numbers. With that being said, I believe you recall seeing the construction cost estimates that were on the various alternates. I'm going from memory here, I'm thinking $438,000 was on the underpass. That's inclusive in that $970,000 number. You'll recall there was a $239,000 estimate on the at-grade crossing. That is inclusive in that $751,000. So if you take your design, your expenses to date, your projected cost, you have your total expenses for a completed project, order magnitude 1.153 million, I'm not going to do the hundreds, versus $956,000. So when you come down here in the bottom, you're looking at, okay, does a tunnel actually cost $450,000, $430,000? If you look at it solely, solistically, sure, it does. However, when you look over here at your at-grade crossing, your at-grade crossing, and I'm going to, your at-grade crossing is not the cost of a few signs and five gallons of paint to paint some road. There's a lot more that goes into that at-grade crossing than meets the eye to meet those standards. All that being said, the difference in an at-grade crossing, and there's one thing I need to point out, is that everything has to be permitted. But the difference in those two projects is, we're actually talking about $197,000 different. For something that has a minimal life cycle cost, a minimal, un, I guess, desirable accident, let's face it, when we put things at grade, railroad crossings, intersections with signals, do signals prevent accidents? They, they reduce the numbers, but do they eliminate them? No. However, you, you take things and not make them at grade and do a great separation between conflicting activities, you extremely reduce those opportunities. So, we're here tonight, your professional staff, for a commission decision. We need that to move forward on this project. I would like to remind you that to date, all trails considered, city taxpayers' money have paid $750,000 to date. That's match money, that's from, well, actually that extends, that includes your Phase 1 project, your money, not the grant money. That includes the monies that you've spent to date from Noble Park to County Park Road that we currently enjoy today. The design decision needs to be made to keep your $500,000 TE grant, as it will expire March 26th. Now, I'm not here to tell you, "You're going to lose your money." I'm here to tell you that we're three years into this project, and that regardless of what we do, we're going to have to apply for an extension before March the 26th, of which this current grant will run out. We will get that extension. That's not, that's not a concern, but it is a concern that you're into the extension cycle and you're still not building. Because that money will not be left on the shelf forever, especially in today's federal economy. Other design considerations will delay the project indefinitely, which may jeopardize the grant funding. I think I just said that. Therefore, my and city manager and staff's position this evening is that we need a decision before we can seek any, I guess, further state approval for this project to, to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Rick, for clarification purposes, did you shed any light on the, our ability to get a permit to put a signal?
Actually, when we had that drawing, that was put before me, and I'm like, well, we haven't actually formally sent anything out to the highway department asking for a formal response for a permit. But we did make a phone call to Jim LaFever, who's your district engineer out there, and his, his pretty much strong verbal response was that they would not, they would not support a pedestrian signal at that location, and they would deny any permit that came forth with that.
Okay, if they deny a pedestrian signal for an at-grade crossing, then to do an at-grade crossing, what choice does that leave you? I mean, if they won't permit it, I'm not following what you're...
Okay. Well, let me get back to these pictures.
I mean...
Remember when I was talking about the ash-toe sight distance concerns for minimum stopping sight distance? Okay? Now the project just gets really expensive. Okay, I got my cursor here. That means that if you want a longer, if you want a longer distance, you have to lengthen the curve, and when you have to lengthen the curve, you have to make it less sharp, or what we refer to as a shallow curve. This is more of a sharp curve, and so if you'll watch the cursor here, what you do is you have to back up here, and then you have to come in more shallow to make the curve longer and flatter, which takes the, takes you from well out in front of the smoke shop, and we have room back here, but that project, that project would be enormously expensive to bring it to an at-grade crossing because you're actually having to reconstruct the entire portion of the road to make this flatter. That is a design option. It's just not a reasonable design option. But with the current geometric conditions out there, and the, and the ash-toe standards that are being looked for, without the, we do not have the appropriate sight distance, therefore, a signal is being proposed for the at-grade condition with the current geometric condition. But, you can change the current geometric condition, but it will far exceed the price of a pedestrian underpass to do so.
Okay, couple, when I talked to Jim LaFever, and I've talked to him three, four times this month, so at 2000, during 2011, he said that Highway 305 was a 7,000. He said, actually, he said, "Alan, it's just slightly over, a hair over 7,000 a day, not the 4,000."
Commissioner Rhodes, I, I talked, I talked with their folks today, and I was looking for that $7,000, and I, and I double-checked with them. I said, "Now, you're sure that you're giving me the correct accounts?"
You said yours was 2,000...
4,040...
Yeah, but it was from year 2010?
No, sir. 4,389 in 2011 for US 45X, 4,000 on 305 in 2010.
Okay. And Jim's ever made a mistake, because he just said, for me, he said, "Look, in 2011, the most current numbers for either one, he agreed 4553 for 45 North, and he mentioned 7,000 for 305." You know, I guess, and here again, you're the engineer, you're the expert. I understand that. But as many times I've talked to Jim in the last month, and it's been several, you know, he's never really thrown, he's never, he's never said, "Look, Alan." I mean, he just, he'd never said, "You've got, all these things are in change." He didn't, he didn't act like there were just many, many roadblocks, and maybe, and I don't know what the procedure is here, we take people, comments from the audience, but I just know that from, from just looking at this thing of pictures and way it's handled, bike, trail crossings with intersections from everywhere... way it's handled, bike trail crossings with intersections from everywhere, and I see sharp curves, and I see multi-lanes, nobody's building tunnels. I, I mean, I asked Jim, I said, do we have any tunnels in West Kentucky? He first said, no. And just real quick, no. And then after he talked about something else, he said, you know, yeah, we do have one on the north-south trail. And I gave Jeff some pictures of it. But I guess I'm just fascinated how that, if every community, I mean, just go to good old, good old Google and, and just Google rail trail or rail hike highway, and you just see picture after picture after picture.
I would like, I'd like to have an opportunity to address that as well. I've seen many of your photos that have been provided to you by constituents.
No, no, these, I just looked at, I just got them off, off the internet.
I, I understand. And then when you look at those, every condition is not, what would I say, comparable to the next condition.
Sure.
They are unique. The 45 crossing at the flood wall is a unique condition, of which presents engineering challenges, financial challenges to implement a project. We've talked about, Rick, how come we have an underpass at 45, but yet we don't see an underpass at Carroll Road? The geometric conditions are not the same.
Though there is a sightline problem eastbound on Carroll Road. There is one, when you look up there to the bridge, off to the left, as you're standing with your back to the park, or on that part of the flood wall, I mean, it's not a perfect sightline either.
And that can be improved by removing trees.
The road does curve a bit to the left.
Yeah. But back to Mr. LaFever's representation of the district office, he is not here this evening. And it would be irresponsible for me or anybody else to represent that position, because that is their, I guess, authority on that, of which, from their position, they don't have anything in hand to approve or disapprove, other than saying that we'll be looking at flattening the cross slope, or the banking, as we might refer to it, to something of 10%, to something flatter that would cause us to touch that much road. But you still have that sight distance concern, of which does not meet an ash tow minimum sight distance standard, of which we, as engineers, I guess stewards of the taxpayers' money, those people that need to be compliant, because in the event we do have an unfortunate, undesirable outcome, we need to be able to defend those positions. And I'm not so sure that we would be in great shape if we were in one of those situations that we had this knowingly and did not address it appropriately. I'm not so sure where we might be in, in, in an unfortunate event. So that's about, okay, forecasting, that's about probability. I'm not a statistical wizard, but I do know that when you do separate crossings, you do extremely lower the probability of an undesirable outcome, as opposed to maintaining an at-grade intersection.
Can I ask another question? Rick, where, where does the design review take place for this?
When?
Where? And what?
Well, actually, actually, the project, actually, the project will be reviewed locally. Oh, let me back up. I mean, I guess, clarify that. The current design that's in-house will go to the district office for their local approval to make sure that all Kentucky, KYTC standards have been met, to what I would say vet the process before it goes to Frankfurt. Frankfurt will then have their internal experts review it to make sure it satisfies all the federal requirements associated with the grant application and the source of the funding, that being FHWA. That's known as what we refer to as the LPA, which is Local Programs Authority. It's, it's a clearinghouse, because these monies come through Frankfurt. Frankfurt officials, finance officials, they become the caretakers of that money to make sure that the local sponsor is actually fulfilling their federal requirements with that. So, when will that take place? We need a decision before we can pursue it, because we don't need to be sending anything to Frankfurt unless we know what we would like for them to approve.
Okay, and just to make sure I'm, I'm clear. At-grade essentially is a $10,000 overrun, if you will, and I know you don't like that.
Yeah.
And then...
I would, I would, I would, again, kind of clarify, we do not, we have incomplete engineering.
I know, we'd have to do, we'd have to do plans.
We put that together.
And then we're assuming a gamble, even if it could be permitted.
I don't think that we're assuming a gamble.
Because you've heard from LaFever...
I think we've been told.
That it's not going to be.
Yeah.
Could not be.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure I'm...
We can't, and Commissioner Gault, it's difficult for me to send this picture to the highway department and say, would you grant me a permit on that? Because they would say, no, that's inconclusive, incomplete data, of which we will not even respond to that, other than, we don't like that pedestrian signal, and just from that alone, we, we would not permit it. But that's, it's actually not making a complete supplemental for them to, to do that. But with that signal included in there, Mr. LaFever was very emphatic with his, with his position.
Okay. And the other cost would be 200,000 for the pedestrian underpass? Because every, all the other grade work, everything else has to be done regardless?
Essentially, we have 197,000 difference in the overrun.
Okay.
Rick, when you mentioned, you said something about the end-to-end 52 feet, and you mentioned, you said this room? Is that about?
This room is probably in excess of 52 feet, barely, not by much, but barely.
So that's about the length of what would be underground?
Somebody count the tiles and times two. I mean, I mean, I mean, I would...
Just for visualization.
Nick, did you just count them?
It's 28 feet wide this way? Did you count this way? Okay, it's 28 feet wide this way, so double that. And that would be, that would be 56.
Okay. And you say it's going to be well lit?
It will be lit permanently.
And have you, have you talked with maybe the Paducah Police about what their feelings are on that, or?
Well, actually, actually, that's, I, I wasn't prepared to get into all that tonight, but it's been presented, so I want to bring it up. You have not, well, we'll have four to date, four and a quarter miles mark from County Park Road, from County Park Road to Campbell Street, that's right down here, you know, okay. It's four and a half miles of what we've got built already. Paducah Police Department does not patrol that. As we produce that, we're going to have to provide some level of security, because if you do walk that trail, there is a, a lot of areas that's secluded, a lot of cover.
Currently?
Currently. Of which we do not have, I guess, folks in, I want to refer to them as mule, small utility vehicle, that run up and down this thing to make sure that everybody's having a good time and using it for its intended purposes, rather than ill will. We don't have that now.
So going underneath that underpass of the 52 feet would be no different than some of the areas that really you would be walking in, it would...
Actually, actually...
It would be lit.
Actually, you have, true, actually, you have areas that, from Noble Park to County Park Road, that are extremely secluded. And unless there's somebody walking there, you wouldn't really know.
And I want to go back on the underpass. It does meet all ADA requirements, whereas the at-grade crossing does not, unless a lot of changes are made to it.
The existing design, the underpass, does meet all ADA standards. I'll repeat that. It meets all ADA standards. The conversion of the at-grade crossing here would meet an ADA standard, but it would not, without the signal, it would not meet the ash tow standard for a minimum stopping sight distance.
Thank you.
60 feet, so eight feet high this room is the length of the underpass. Any other questions?
I think we have some public comments tonight.
Okay.
Thank you, Rick. So, we have Bill. I'm sorry, I can't read the last name on this. Bill, can you read that?
Bill Flarsheim.
Flarsheim, Bill Flarsheim.
He had to read, but this convinced him. I don't know what he was when it says the truck was, I don't know which side, that he was sitting beside, and he said, I, he was on that truck with seven, but hearing what Mr. Murphy said, I couldn't understand.
And we have Nick Warren.
You might hear a...
No, come on up, please, Nick.
I had a question. Did you, Rick, was there a comment?
12 feet.
12 feet, so I mean, this length, 12 feet. Length of this.
The width, the width?
12 feet, that's what I'm saying, it's not perception of this room being 28 feet wide through, through a underpass. Nick Warren, I live in 1935 Jefferson. I was just curious, I saw this in the newspaper. I know we're always restricted on funds, and we're trying to do as many things as we can, especially for recreation as we possibly can. I understand much more now what Rick's comments were about the cross, cross slope in that area. I guess the only other solution, Rick, that I could see, perhaps, that hasn't been looked at, would be maybe the realignment of where we're crossing 45. If we went more towards town, or more towards the bridge, and not crossing at the 10% side slope, what, is that, is that the maximum side slope? Does it taper off and get improved as you go towards town and away? Like to, what we, 5% is what we'd need for crossing. For crossing. I'm just asking.
And, and Nick brings up a good, a good point, but you'll see that unfortunately, we are in what that we refer to as the full super, or the full embankment. And you would almost...
So that's 10% all the way around?
Well, from this point, about this point right here, to about that point right there, and then we get into these other terms called runout and runoff, of where you, you transition from a full tilt of the road, and then you get down to where you call it normal crown. Actually, the transition starts about right in this area right here, and it starts bringing the upside, outside lane up, and then the whole pavement starts sloping all at one time. So what Nick is suggesting is that, is there an area out here, 5%, or an area out here that's 5%, that's in the general vicinity of that? And the answer to that question is no.
How far out would you have to go, probably?
To get to 5%, guessing, right in there. And then, of course, you're in the same, you're in the same portion of the curve, so then, right in there. So you'd go, you'd go an equal distance either way from that. Now, if you was at an at-grade crossing, now you, now you're getting back to, okay, do I own that right-of-way?
Well, I own this right-of-way.
Yeah, okay, so now, now there's other...
That's what I'm saying, I don't, I'm just saying, is perhaps an examination of realigning the crossing somewhere on 45. I know you got, look at, just the same thing that you did on the others, is looking at all the impacts of additional acquisition of property or whatever. How does that work?
No, you just, you got to do here. And you got to rub it a little bit to make it, okay, okay.
Well, what I'm saying is, you know, coming back in here somewhere, and perhaps the trail might, and I see it's, it's also acquisition of some property that we may not own in that area. But is there any possibility that that would be perhaps an option at less, at, at less cost than the tunnel? I'm, I'm not asking to answer today.
Well...
Just saying, is there a possibility of looking?
There's a possibility of looking at other options, but other at-grade options, no.
Why not? At-grade, I mean...
Because if you're looking to move this back, and now you're looking for a signal back here, or if you were to improve that, to get back, that back, now the flood wall itself acts as a site obstruction because of the depression that's at this location. And I would, I would, I could show you that on those pictures, if I were to go back to those and...
But it's your, it's your inherent feeling tonight, that adjusting the alignment would not improve anything on the cost?
I don't think, I don't think there'd be appreciable savings for further adjustments, I suppose.
That was my question.
Thank you, Nick.
Richard Glasscock, Lower Town resident. Nick started it, I, I want to take just a little bit further on a relocation. Right down in front of the smoke shop, there's a crosswalk with a stoplight. We already, with the, the tunnel, we got to build a ramp going down and a ramp coming up. How, how expensive would it be to build a, going down to get right down to the crosswalk that already exists? All the lights are there, everything's there. All we got to do is put some black concrete down to it.
Rick?
I know there's been no study done on it, and I'm throwing you under the bus, and I don't want to do that.
Well, actually, actually, we did consider that option early on, whereas we talked to the owner of the smoke shop. We've also, right now, there's folks that enjoy a gravel road that goes up and over the levee, there between the smoke shop and Mr. Edwards' property. All that property is privately owned. So now, you would have to make a right-of-way acquisition for a public purpose to cross that property as well, of which you would create a, a termini, or an ending, without, you might get across the street, but how do you get back to the trail? Because you have an active business there, a rental, a construction rental business that is actually just right on top of the road there in the corner.
There's no sidewalk there?
No, there's, there's, no, there's no sidewalk, it's just pavement, and actually, it's just continuous entrance into that business there. That's actually, you know, undesirable from a transportation point of view as well.
You know, I think all of us want to save as much money as possible, but I think we also want a safe crossing, we want a safe greenway trail, and that's what our city engineer works very hard to comply with everything, and to build it as cost-efficient as possible. We've worked on this greenway trail, Martha knows that, for, for years, and it's been a goal of hers to get this finished. And I think the expedient thing to do is to approve this tonight, and let's get started on it, Rick. So, we need, kind of, Rick needs some guidance here, fellow commissioners.
We'd like to have a motion to authorize the city engineer to proceed with completion of design to include a below-grade crossing.
Hi, May, before you guys start that.
Is that an entry? It's just an entry. There, it comes in here.
I'm Renee Rainey. How are y'all? I have been on this trail several times already, from the park all the way to the end of the new greenway trail. My most concern is the safety of the people, like Rick said, when it comes on, on the levee. And I feel that there should be security lights put throughout, throughout the, the greenway trail, along with possibly phone lines that would connect directly to the police station in case something does happen. This is something for y'all to consider. And also about the tunnel, I feel that, if y'all looked into it, if it happens to flood, if y'all have any gates to close that tunnel off?
Rick?
To keep the water from...
You want to answer that real quick?
Coming in over here.
Actually, you make my point with regard to the Corps of Engineers on that. Oops, I don't mean to do that. I don't know what I did there, but I don't want to do it again. This area right here, actually, this is the... This area right here, actually, this is the, the riverside where the water rises up, and this is the protected side where we maintain our dryness, hopefully. This is the area where the tunnel, or excuse me, pedestrian underpass would go through, there would be no need to put in any gates associated with that, because we have an active drainage facility, and it's referred to as a toe drain for the levee that drains groundwater, uh, that may come through the levee. So that's the drainage system that will be used to drain that as well. There would be no, no need, even if the water was here, there'd be no need for any gate installation, and this, uh, with the geotechnical data, the, the soil, I guess, science, the soil science here, and the construction of this would be compliant with that levee so as not to jeopardize the integrity of its flood protection properties.
Well, I'd much rather see the, the overcross done, because that way you can see what people are actually doing, instead of it, instead of going underneath the tunnel, because if people are gonna do something, they're gonna do it regardless if there's any lights or not underneath that tunnel there. And the overpass, you can keep more of a better eye on it, it's less expensive, and then you'll be able to apply the other grant money towards the license and security for the people.
I want to correct something, because misinformation is not good. You just stated that the overpass was less expensive, and there's the cost, $700,000 estimated. So that is misinformation that could be disseminated out in the public, and that's what we're trying to do, is address the public's need for information, not misinformation.
Okay, well, I wasn't saying about that, I was more like that, the, just the walk over where you just levy off the, levy off the area there, and do the, the cross, the walk over, with, with the lights.
Thank you, Renee.
Do you have any more public comments?
Any more comments?
Commissioner, Mayor, um, I'm Durbal Nursery, resident of Paducah. I'd like to make a couple of observations, personal observations. The trail is wonderful, I mean, the idea is wonderful, but you want the best experience you can have, and that's what I want to speak to, because I think the room is probably 50 feet, maybe 60 feet long, and the, and I'm concerned about the environment, the safety in the environment of walking through that tunnel, compared to which I don't see a cost estimate of an overpass. Now, I would think if you really considered an overpass, you'd have a good estimate, not just something like this, Rick. And I think it's worth it, I know there's a timeframe, I know there's all these technical data, I've worked with all these people too. I mean, I understand that you build all this stuff in to a decision, but the commissioner's decision is what's the best environment for the people using that trail, winter, summer, spring, and autumn, rain, what have you. And I think, my personal opinion is, from observations, using overpasses, using tunnels, the overpass is something to be considered. The vistas you get, the vistas of the river, the entrance to Paducah, the safety, it certainly is safe as an underpass, and I think a case could be made, it's more safe than an underpass or a tunnel. So I, my recommendation is to really step back, think of this, get a real cost estimate, and look at that, because I think this is what we all want, the best decision, not on a timeframe, and if the costs are close, then, then really go for the one that's the best. I can tell the engineering's already been done on the underpass, so this decision has been made, it seems like. It's a, it's a conclusion that's, you've already come to because of the engineering, but I would ask you to step back, look at this, look at the overpass, reconsider it from a cost, an environmental, uh, safety points of view. Those are the criteria, and then you go to engineering. You don't start with engineering and go the other direction, and I'm sure you consider that, I'm probably saying things you've already talked about and considered, but I really would think to look more closely at the cost and these other factors. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to address, I guess, some of the gentleman's comments. Actually, when we go out and we looked at the project, we looked at it in several different respects. One, my experience in these areas with roadway and bridge design, some 30 years. You can look at a project, and you can pull from your experience and say, we can pursue these options, but we're probably not going to yield desirable outcomes. For example, when you look at a road and you see a 10% cross slope, I don't need to read ASHTO, I don't need to read the ADA to know that I have problems, that I know that I've got to satisfy some conditions that will stretch that road there. I already had some of that in mind when we started pursuing that, because as I looked at that from all four directions, and looked at that, that's actually what your, part of my salary is for, is to take that, that professional experience, apply it. One thing that is different, and, and this is unfortunate, uh, the one thing that's different about city government, as opposed to state government, and as opposed to federal government. We spoke earlier about a project that started in 1998 called the Paducah Flood Wall Project, and 15 years later, we've not stuck a shovel in the ground, but we've spent over a million dollars in studies. When we look at a project like that, we start, I guess, identifying, uh, cost, effect, and needs, and then my experience is going to be that, if we pursue that, we're probably going to get something that yields nothing, but we're going to pay an engineer, uh, several thousand dollars to do that. State highway, I'll use them as an example. In my 16 years of private practice, we had several projects where we would actually spend several months studying a project, highway department asked us to come up with three viable alternatives. That might be, I don't know, 750 million dollar contract to come up with alternatives. Then, once the alternatives are yielded, then a design contract comes out, a second contract comes out, maybe it's a million, million-five design contract to pursue a selected alternative. Well, you start looking at those numbers, the city of Paducah does not have the luxury of time and infinite studies, because your monies are on a timeframe, and you, you use them, you know, we talked about extensions tonight, uh, on those things. So, part of my job is to see where costs can be saved, see what we can do, uh, and ask an engineer to proceed with that design without costly, timely, extended studies. Sure, every, everything that has been mentioned here tonight could have been done, but would it been in the best interest of all of the people who may enjoy this trail, of which might have yielded 10 or 15,000 dollars of savings? Time is money, and I think that's what we're discussing tonight. It's not to say that all the engineering was not done on that, that was considered.
Let me, let me say that, that, uh, it was my decision to not ask Rick to incur the additional costs necessary to engineer the above-grade crossing in great detail, and, and that's for two reasons. Number one, I have a high degree of confidence in, in his capability to make a, a good estimate for that. That's, that's not a complex thing to engineer, that's a matter of determining the distance you need, and then something about the structure, and I think when Rick quotes a, a square foot or linear foot cost for that, I think you can be pretty assured that that's, that's in the ballpark, close enough to base a decision on whether or not you want to proceed to consider that alternative further.
Yeah. I, I'm comfortable with that, Jeff, I did ask someone who owned a construction company to take a wag at that, if you will, and he said, there's no question that, um, a pedestrian crossing of that sort would be much more expensive than something underground.
You're not getting into a lot of the other issues you do on the things, especially the at-grade, you're talking about building a structure.
Right.
You're also, you're also talking about, I'm, I'm sorry for interrupting, you're also talking about building a structure that's founded on a, I was going to say, regulated piece of soil, because we're not to, I guess, penetrate the levee more than three feet. This is, this is a fact that not everybody knows, but if you're going to be putting foundations in the top of the levee, that means you're going to be digging down, and so you're digging down below the frost line, but the size of those foundations, so now you're actually penetrating a, a, uh, a, a structure that is meant for water not to pass through it, and every time you put a penetration in it, you're giving a path. I mean, they're, they're concerned about roots in levees, now you're putting foundations in the top of levees, so. These are things that, I guess, the average person don't realize, because they don't have, I guess, the involvement with the intricacies of this particular location.
And I, I guess what, this, this has always been in the original plan.
Excuse me?
The tunnel, if you will, has been in the original plan.
Well, I mean, four years ago, four years ago, when we were out there, how does, how does a chicken cross the road? I mean, I'm not trying to.
Well, my, my point is, it's been there for a while, until we got to the, so, we're at this point, the money's getting ready to run, we need to make a decision, and I guess you need a motion on the floor, and then we can have further discussion, but I'll go ahead and make that motion, and then we can discuss it further, but how do you, how do you need the motion?
Proceed with the design of the below-grade crossing. That's sufficient, Rick?
Yeah.
Second.
Well, well, I guess, based on this presentation, make a motion to proceed with alternate C, the underpass option that was presented here.
For more clarity to tie into the presentation, sure, track back.
Sure, sure, for, for public purposes, consumption.
Since we've already had a motion and a second, do we have to?
You're making the motion. I'll make the motion, but I, you know, there may be more discussion, I, I don't.
Since we're changing the wording, do we need to do anything?
Well, I just want to make it clear, that we're authorizing the city manager, I mean, the city engineer, to proceed with a below-grade crossing, which is alternate C.
In conformance.
As presented, as presented during this.
In conformance.
In conformance with alternate C as presented.
Okay. Are you open for discussion, or?
Discussion.
I, I just would like to say that, to me, the comments that I've heard, the people of Paducah are anxious and hungry to have this part of the greenway trail completed, and as you said, it has been in the plan. I feel like I have driven to Brookport more times in the last couple of weeks than I had in the previous few years, looking at it, and while I really don't want to have to spend that extra money, to me, it comes down to safety, and I just can't get comfortable with the fact of people crossing in that unique location, as you described it, in a curve with limited visibility, allowing children to do that, especially if you can't get a pedestrian signal. So I would like to see us move forward.
Well, you know, that, that was a concern of mine, Sandra, because I think we're going to have more children on that section of the greenway trail come summer, when they want to go over to the new pool and spray pad, so, um.
Part of.
Safety is paramount.
Part of what we, this is a universal trail. It's sure.
It's a family trail.
Sure it's for biking enthusiasts, uh, it's kind of a share of the road, so to speak, there will be those people who will be walking, there'll be young children, there'll be cycle enthusiasts, there'll be folks walking their dogs, it's for all of our community to use, it's not specific to any one use, and we, we have heard some input from certain enthusiasts, but it, uh, it doesn't need to be misunderstood that this is for one group of folks, it's for all to use and enjoy.
And Jeff, you were there with a conversation with Mr. LaFever, you heard that conversation, so you're, you're pretty sure that.
I asked the question.
Okay. You know, I just like to hear everybody on the same page when it comes to those kind of things.
All right, clearly, I guess this is a great example of how, where businessperson meets government. And, you know, the businessperson me, again, I'm always asked, can we buy one of these things, but we don't have enough money to buy one of these things in business, so you have to figure out a way to buy this thing that you really want with the money that you really don't have, and it just irritates me that, that it's this frugal person, that I'm always the guy that says, find a cheaper way to do it. And, so, I won't vote for it tonight. I mean, I get what you're talking about, I had no appreciation for the 10% slope, I understand that. I guess, had I been on the commission this whole time, maybe I would have warmed up a little more. Maybe it's just I'm just a cheapskate at heart, and it just bugs me to spend 206,761 dollars.
197.
And maybe we'll find some economies, and maybe we'll get it down, um.
Again, you haven't got a bid yet.
That's right, we ain't got a bid.
But.
And hopefully it'll be, and hopefully I'll be a happy camper when, when you come running with this phone call that says, guess what, Alan, it's less than what we thought.
Well, I would, I would, I share those sentiments about being frugal, and, and.
Yeah, you do.
A good steward of a taxpayer's money. However, uh, there's a difference there between business and public safety. Your, your decisions that you make in business, and I'm saying this for the benefit of business owners, your decision in business is based on, within that business, that is not necessarily expanded to the entire public, and there's, there's a greater, there's a greater responsibility there that we have for that, and that's what we try to represent. I hope, I hope that's.
We won't get into that.
I hope that's been, I hope that's been observed this evening.
Okay, I need to ask for a vote. City Clerk?
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
All right, and I think we have an executive session.
We do.
Any, any commissioner comments, though, before we go into that?
Shall I read?
All right, Alan.
Is this what, do the new people get all these readings to do? It says, motion for closed session, I move the board to go into a closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics, future sale or acquisition of a specific parcel of real estate is permitted by KRS 61 dot 8100, in parentheses, 1B.
Second.
Thank you all.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
So, you take the high road.